You are all set, sir.
Okay. We'll call the June 2nd, 2021 special meeting of the Town Hall Renovations Project Building Committee to order. Mr. Barron, would you take the role, please?
Yes, members were asked to signify their participation when their name is called. Counselor Bedraco.
Here.
Counselor Minor.
Here.
Mr. Claffey. Mr. Mortensen.
Here.
Mr. Murtha.
Here.
Mr. Woods. Mr. Harpy.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Mr. Woods is here. He was muted.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
I want to entertain a motion for approval of prior meeting minutes of April 14th, 21.
Make a motion that we approve the minutes.
These are the corrected minutes.
Corrected.
Corrected minutes.
As amended or corrected. Is there a second, please?
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Let's have it. Minutes so approved. Public participation. Any member of the public wishing to speak on the name, state your name and address. If calling into the Zoom meeting by telephone, star nine to raise your hand to be recognized, use star six. When recognized to speak by telephone, state your name and address for the record. Toll free number, 888-788-0099, or 877-853-5247. Webinar ID is 829-3365-8631, and the password is 834050. James, do we have anyone from the public?
No public in attendance at this time.
Okay, thank you. We'll move on to Downs' project update. Frank?
Thanks, Joe. Good evening, everybody. So to give you an update, we'll start with the financials like we normally do. The approved change orders that we've, we've approved to date, so this million, 5,844,16, that goes back to February. That's basically unchanged since February, bringing our revised GMP value to 28,766,833 and 16 cents. And then between the pending and approximate change orders that we have processed or being vetted at this point in time, it nets to a credit value of 2,072488, which reduces the anticipated final GMP value to 28,764,10828. Within the CM contingency, we have expended that in full, the $31 that's shown there as remaining CM contingency. That is in a, a PCO that's being credited back to the town. Within the owner's contingency, you can see the, the breakdown between the pending and approximate value. The pending changes that I'm presenting this evening is a net credit of $9,024.88. And then on the approximate side, the cost that we're still compiling totals about 6,300. And that leaves us with 2,84380 within the owner's contingency. Again, excluding any of the day two work that we've been tracking separately so far. Within the owner's soft costs, again, I've been saying this since day one, I have not tracked anything here. Just earmark this dollar figure to, you know, come up with the total budget. So the 1,706,810 is unchanged. And then the CIP funds, the other funding source that came into the project to fund some of the work, the CIP funds that were available to us based on the initial amount, and then the additional funds. We had 326,55688 come into the project, then an additional 96,98382. Based on all the approvals to date, we've expended 369,94449 out of CIP. And that leaves us with almost 54,000 left in CIP funds. Again, excluding the day two work, the project budget remains unchanged since the last time I reported it. And if nobody has any questions, I can go right into the schedule.
Anybody have any questions, Frank? On that part of it, I think it's worthy to note that we still remain under the bond issue on the guaranteed maximum price. The bond issue approved by the voters was for 28,818,358. And we have a guaranteed maximum price, which is about 54,000 some odd dollars under that, which is a tribute to all of us and a tribute to Downs. The overrun is part of the soft costs, part of the retainage, and part change orders beyond that. But on the harsh construction costs, we stayed within the bond issue. And that's remarkable, given all the impact of what we had to live with. Go ahead, Frank.
All right. So moving over to the schedule to give you an update with respect to work that's been completed since the last time we met. The last time we met was the middle of April. So after that meeting, at the end of April, we completed the majority of the site work. So all the plantings have been taken care of at this point. The, the paving was taken care of at the end of the month. All the line striping signage and site furnishings as well was taken care of, including the hydro seating. In terms of progress, work in progress, rather, really, I don't have anything to report right now. Down below the work to start, we've got some items that we're tracking that we are planning to take care of this week. I'm not there, but I am, you know, keeping tabs on guys that are going there to finish up these odds and ends. So we have a small gap at the gym floor. This happens at the south side where we've got that egress door that goes out to the stairway. We're going to get a new threshold to fix that gap. We have a threshold on order. I don't have an ETA yet, but I would expect to be out there in the next couple of weeks to complete that. We have a lintel that's a piece of steel that spans a door opening at Human Services that needs some paint touch up. We did make contact with the painter. He's aware of it. So I imagine that we would get him out there by next week to take care of that. The photo cell that operates the exterior lighting around the Town Hall and Community Center. So I've got replacement of the relay on here as a work to start, but we've actually replaced that relay at some point early on. For whatever reason, the lights do come on. Sometimes during the day, we haven't been able to see it when it actually happens. But we have ruled out the photo cell. I've talked to the electrician about this a few times. If we're able to witness the, the problem, we might be able to pinpoint it to the relay being the cause, in which case we would immediate, immediately replace the relay. For now, we're just going to monitor it and see how it goes. The third floor of the PD, so there's some ceiling tiles that were taken out by the town of Newington. They have to go back. Unfortunately, this is going to become a CO issue for us. In talking with the town, it's, it sounds like they're prepared to go back and put in the ceiling tiles. If for some reason they can't do that, we're prepared to take that work on. But that is a CO issue, and that is what's holding us up from getting the CO. That was a conversation that we had just this afternoon with the fire marshal. New trim at the door jam along the east side. This was an existing condition. As you exit out of the PD on the east side towards the Town Hall, there's some, basically a gap between the new door frame and the old wall that we're going to cover with a piece of trim, piece of wood trim. We have a carpenter lined up to take care of that. I know our superintendent's been in touch with our carpenters to get them lined up with some material to address that small issue. And then there was a gap at the retaining wall. This is the new retaining wall where the generator is located. So between the retaining wall and the brick at the PD, we had us, I don't know, two or three pieces of retaining wall block to install to close up the gap. We left some of the retaining wall block out so that we could finish the brick. Now that that's completed, I do believe that the landscaping contractor went back there today to fix that. I do have to confirm that, but I will confirm that, follow up with you guys. The latch bolt depth at the dumpster pad gate, again, my understanding is our fencing subcontractor went back today to drill a deeper hole so that the latch bolt will, will stay. And I will confirm that, follow up with you folks. And then as far as milestones, I mentioned the, the CO. Obviously, getting the CO is, is the final phase of the project. And if we can get the town to go back and put in the ceiling tiles within the PD on the third floor, and it sounds like they're prepared to do that, then the fire marshal should have no problem doing a walkthrough with us and giving us the CO. And then the day two work, you know, something that we've talked about, something that we've been tracking off to the side. I think we've, we've come to a point where we need some final direction on how to address the day two work, if we do any of it all, if at all, as part of this project. But we do have a separate list that I'll get to shortly. For now, we'll go through the COPs that I'm prepared to present this evening for a vote of approval, starting with COP number 378.
Frank? Excuse me, can you hold one more second? With that, Mr. Minor had a question. Go ahead, Chris.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just real quick, Frank, on the CO, are you saying we do not have a CO for the main building yet? We're still operating on a TCO?
That's correct.
All right. Is there a reason why the CO is being held for that building when the issues are related to a completely different address and different structure?
We were just planning to get the CO for the entire project, so we didn't, we didn't break up the, the CO.
Okay. All right. And you said there was an issue with the tiles were removed by the town?
Yes.
Do you know, do you know why they were removed?
I'm not quite sure, Chris. Maybe because they were going to be saved to put somewhere else. I'm not, I'm not totally clear on that.
Okay. No, that's fine. Thank you.
Frank, we have two other, I don't know who they are, James. Who, who's first?
Mr. Woods is next.
Mr. Woods, please.
Thank you, Joe. Frank, just a question regarding the landscaping and the number of fatalities on the property and the general condition of the latest hydro seating of the, of the lower sections of the lawns. It's pretty well weeded over. I'm assuming the contractor has to, one, replace plants for within one year, and two, has to establish a acceptable standard press.
Yeah, I can't dispute that, Don. You're absolutely correct. I know I haven't been there, honestly, since the end of April, so I do have to get back there and inspect it. Our superintendent is going back there tomorrow. We'll also mention it to him to check the grounds. And, you know, if we need to, we can get the landscaper out there with us and we can, you know, walk the areas and point them out. But certainly, it's their obligation to take care of any dead plantings and make sure we get proper turf established.
Are they responsible for maintenance during that period? I mean, normally we are, so I'm just curious, because I don't think they're doing any watering. That's what, that's what'd be my guess anyway, especially if they're on those 90-degree days.
Yeah, watering would be part of the maintenance program by the landscaping contractor.
Okay. So that'll be discussed again at some point.
Yes.
Okay, thanks.
You said, Don?
Yep.
Okay. Who was next, James?
Yep, that's all set. You had Counselor Minor as well as Mr. Woods. That's all.
Okay, go ahead, Frank, please.
Okay, so getting back to the COPs that I'm presenting this evening, Joe, starting with COP 378, the last of the PD items that we needed to address for final CO. Total's $3,056.97. And then the next looks like 1, 2, 3, 4 COPs, 382, 83, and 84, and 86, were all to go back to the GMP and reconcile line items that we didn't spend 100%. So they all yield credits back to the town. The first one, 382, has to do with site work. Where we were left with 3,85669, that's getting credited back to the town. 383, we were carrying for a while. Couple allowances that we didn't end up spending completely for the dumpsters and the temporary toilets. So that's a savings of 4,89593. 384, similar to 382, we had some money left on the painting line item within the GMP. That's a credit of 9,32273. There was the state education fee, COP 386, that we originally carried within the GMP. We did check with the building department. They're not requiring any kind, kind of state education fee be paid for the project. So that's a savings back to the town of 6,725. And then the last couple here are adds, 387. We sent the mason back to do a wash down just below the bow window at dispatch, because we did do new veneer pretty much around that, that other, the other areas of the PD. It just made sense to clean that up and have it blend better with the rest of the brick. So that is a cost of 2,29145. And then, excuse me, and then 388 is to go back into the PD. Up on the third floor, we had existing heating units that we refed power to. I believe it was nine or 10 circuits that we had to refeed power to heating and lights. And I think there was an exit light as part of this work for 10,42705. All of those net a credit savings of $9,024.88.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to take action on the change order request for a credit of 9,024.88. Mr. Mortensen?
I move that we accept COP 378, 382, 383, 384, 386, 387, 388, for a net total reduction of 9,024.88.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Let's have it. I think we're set with that. Mr. Barron, do we, do you need to take any action on fund transfers?
No, as a result of this, this is a credit, so there would not be any, any purchase orders to have to write.
Okay, thank you very much. Frank, before we move on, I just had a follow up to Mr. Woods's questions on the plantings and et cetera. Is there any, is there no penalty in the contract with him for his avoidance of doing anything? I mean, he's in a timely fashion, or is it just the warranty that we're relying on? Is there any kind of, do we know? Is there any kind of financial penalty?
Well, I mean, if.
Giddy up on some of these things.
If, if there's a planting that goes bad, you know, prematurely, and it's within the warranty, and he's, you know, obligated, he's obligated to replace it at no additional cost. I'm not sure what other, what other penalties we could impose.
Just curious if there's anything else in the contract. That's all.
Yeah.
And a question, I guess, for Mr. Barron. Do you know when the irrigation system will go forward? Because there's a large portion of that property that, well, at least the part that borders cedar that's sod. And watering is, to go to Mr. Woods's point, is going to be critical as the hot days come. Do you know when the town would be taking action? That was on the day two list.
Yeah, I know that the Town Council has approved the funds, but no, I do not know when the, when the irrigation system will be installed. Parks and Recreation is working on that, and I'm not sure where they stand on it.
Okay. That's all I have, Frank. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Counselor Minor, has his hand raised?
Mr. Minor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just real quick, Frank, to follow up on the follow up regarding the landscaping. They had sprinklers set up on timers last year when they did the initial install for the turf areas and even the hydro seeded areas on the embankments. That was all removed last year prior to the winter, and I haven't seen any of it return. It might make sense to recommend to them to bring them back in again? Or is that outside of our purview to make that request? Because again, he's, he owns it until 12 months after installation. And, you know, there's several areas that were looking very good this spring that are now starting to get damaged with the heat and lack of water.
You know, Chris, I think it's a great suggestion. I think it's in his best interest to do so, you know.
Yeah.
Definitely going to review that with the landscaper and let him know that's the best course of action here. I don't know why we're not doing that now, so.
Shouldn't he know that? Shouldn't, shouldn't, shouldn't he know that? I mean, why, why are all our, the best ideas coming from us and not him?
It's, it's an industry thing, Joe. I mean, quite frankly, I know a lot of contractors that gamble on the fact that they're going to survive. And if they don't, then they go deal with it at the end of their warranty period. But I just want to make sure that they're on notice officially that they're deficient at this point. And we're not even, you know, close to the end of their 12-month warranty, at least on the first install for phase one.
Right.
And just one more quick follow up to the third floor work on all the refeeds.
Go ahead.
Do you know if those were documented on the ENOs? I don't think Mark is joining us anymore, so do you know, Frank, if that's on a tracking list?
That, yeah, that was something that was maintained by Colliers. I'm not sure who, who the torch was passed to to track changes.
Okay, Joe, can we make a request, or Jeff, can we make a request to make sure that that is included in there?
Yeah, we can make a request of administration that it's included.
Okay, thank you. That's all I've got.
Okay. Mr. Woods has his hand raised.
Don, go ahead, please.
Yeah, just to carry on the conversation about the landscaping. I, I don't know if it's in our purview or has to go from the town manager, but it certainly would make sense to send him a letter stating his obligations or reaffirming his obligations and what we expect of watering and maintenance. I don't know, Frank, is he responsible for mowing too as part of the job?
I don't believe mowing is part of the spec, but I will, I will double check that.
Okay. And then just to sort of back up what Frank said, the penalty, Joe, for not doing what he's supposed to do is the expense of having to replace everything a second time, or a third time, you know?
There goes his profit, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Very good. Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, I can certainly express the concern that's been raised by the town, and I will put that in writing to the landscaping contractor to put him on notice. Okay, so we can move on, Joe.
I'll call him for one, that the committee is shocked and very disappointed, given his reputation in the marketplace. Very surprised and disappointed. Go ahead.
Okay, so just a couple COPs that we are tracking as an order of magnitude. The first one, 355, so that's to reconcile final bond costs for various trades. We've actually narrowed this down to just, I think we're less than a handful of trades that we're chasing to confirm that there are no bond costs. The majority of the subcontractors have had their retainage released at this point. They've signed zero-dollar change orders, essentially stating that they would come back with no more additional costs. That would include any bond costs out there. So with the handful of trades still out there, we just put an estimate on it of 1,500. And then 389, the flagpoles, now we get to the flagpole discussion. And this COP has been carved out to deal with a new rope and pulley system that would enable folks from the town to operate the flagpoles at the ground level. If we were to do nothing and not go through with this COP, you could raise and lower the flags. Unfortunately, in order to do so, you'd have to climb up on a ladder and get on top of the canopy and do it that way. So this is an alternate that the design team has come up with to raise and lower the flags from, from grade, essentially. The pulleys would get mounted along the side of the canopy on either side, because you do have two poles there. And I have not been able to confirm whether or not any flag vendor is familiar with this type of setup. I suppose we could just go ahead and install the flagpoles. I could have done that a long time ago. But I understand the concern raised by the town that they don't want to be on top of the canopy, especially in a winter condition, to raise and lower the flags. And that's why we have not proceeded with installing the flagpoles at this point. So there is this alternate setup that, I'm not sure if Chris has joined us, but I know Chris O'Neill from Quizzenberry reached out to a local flag vendor, I believe Flagman, out of Middletown, to see if there's any experience with this type of setup.
Were you there, Chris, to comment?
Yeah, I'm here, Joe. Yeah, Frank, Frank is correct. I'm trying to get ahold of the vendor the town has used in the, in the past to get, get some of their feedback on the proposed system, see if it will backwork as I designed it. Unfortunately, their technical guys on vacation, so I've been dealing with another person in the office. I'm not sure if they have the knowledge, so I'm going to call them back later this week, see if I can get an answer out of them.
Okay, do you think we could have some sort of informal timeframe on this? Because this has become a very sore spot with administration, as you know, and other people. How we're going to proceed or a strategy going forward if this doesn't work. And, you know, the one thing I think the committee shares in concern is that we go ahead with this pulley system, and then it doesn't work. I think that would really, that would, that would be something. Don't want to create a problem bigger than is already there. So I think we have to have a turnoff situation here. Either we're going to get an answer within the next two weeks, or you tell.
I think that's, yeah, I think that's reasonable, Joe, a couple of weeks.
And then we've got ground mounting these things, bringing the poles back, ground mount them. And as unhappy a situation that's going to be, we're going to have to do that, I think, otherwise. As I said before, there's no sense in pissing the town manager off. We know how he feels about this thing. And there's just no extent, there's no benefit to the committee or to the public at this point on leaving an issue hang out. So, you know, there's so much concern and respect to the American flag, or at least there should be. At least there is in Newington, and we don't want to get in a situation where people would consider this to be disrespectful in some fashion, that it's not being considered important. Because I know it's important to you, but our Kerry and Sons, and I know it's important to Frank Downs and to the committee, so. Mr. Minor, you had a question, please?
Yeah, just real quick, Joe, on the flagpoles, as a possible, well, twofold. One, I'm presuming, Chris, that there would be a pulley mounted, you know, basically vertically right at the edge of the, the canopy that would go down to a ground level cleat. Is that basically what your thoughts are?
Correct, yeah. There's actually, actually two pulleys. So there's one at the base of the flag, and then there, that would allow it to go to the right or left to the edge of the canopy, and then one at the edge of the canopy that would then go vertical.
Okay, because my only concern or observation of that would be that aesthetically, I don't know how pleasing that would be, because that is a focal point and backlit. And to have, you know, rope just physically, you know, straddling the, the brick lines and just coming down. I'm just, I'm just questioning the aesthetics of taking away from what the intent was when they were originally designed. That as an alternative, what I was thinking, and again, I'll just throw this out there, would be what if we went with the two existing flagpole mounts, one being for the State of Connecticut flag and one being for the Town of Newington flag, which theoretically would be very, very rarely lowered, and doing the US flag as a. And doing the US flag as a ground level mount. To the right of the entrance where the uh. Where the uplight is currently that was set for the monument that ended up going up top. Does that make sense to anybody as an alternative?
Mr. O'Neil?
Uh, the only only issue I see with that is the existing flagpoles are not uh ground mount flagpoles, so.
If you took the two existing flagpoles that we have and set them up there as they would, you know, traditionally be placed. And both the Connecticut, Newington flag wouldn't require the servicing. That the US flag requires being so frequently raised and lowered lately.
That's not that's not correct. The uh, the state flag must be lower than the national flag at all times.
At all times.
Okay, you s- you said lower in elevation, uh, ed or?
Yes, it has to be lower, because the US has to fly above the the state flag at all times.
Here's what I here's what I would suggest. Why don't we give Mr. O'Neil an opportunity? I'd say a two week period to get an answer on that and then we'll we'll uh find a forum to discuss this again. With the options, because we'll be in a position to know that we're out of options. And we don't know that, to be honest yet, uh, the attractiveness aside, which is um. I understand sensitivity to that, but let's let's give him an opportunity to take one more swing at this thing. Uh, and let's see what we can do, because the town administration's gonna weigh in heavily on the final resolution of this, so. I'm gonna think all these factors into account and.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Murthy, you'll speak, please, go ahead.
How were the uh the original ones raised and lowered?
By getting up on a ladder, you mean?
No, the original ones at Town Hall.
The old Town Hall.
Ground level, ground level.
What does they have? Pully in the top, pulley in the bottom?
Yeah, they were ground level, so you could service them right from the ground.
And that worked for fifty years. What's the discussion then?
Do is work our way through the original design to see if it still works. And it doesn't work from the town manager, because he's not gonna take the risk of people going up in a ladder, on a ladder, this is how this all started. To make the adjustments to the flags. And so we went to some other type of option, which may or may not work, and came up with the pulley discussion. Which we vetted out, I think, pretty much, but there's one more opportunity to find out if it's something that can be presented that's acceptable to the committee and the town. And then we can get into the options, I promise. But let's give it one more shot, since it isn't the original design, um, and we've got money for it already.
So, Joe, one more one more question for you. So, the original design. Had those two flagpoles being equal in elevation. Am I correct in that?
Uh, Mr. O'Neil?
Yeah, that's correct.
That's wrong.
So, so right there in and of itself would be a problem.
You're right.
Well, we're gonna we're gonna digest this whole thing. Let's see what he has and then we'll cut, we'll we'll come up with uh an option. That we'll suggest to the town manager and we'll go from there and see what happens, okay, cuz we go. All night, we're gonna be just putting the bat on our head, going around the circle. Yes, go ahead, Mr. Murthy.
The American flag, it has to be above any other flag, so the pole itself has to be taller.
Right.
Mr. Chairman, I believe Mr. Mortensen has a question.
I'll save it for the whole meeting. We're gonna spend on these flags next time.
Okay, go ahead, Frank.
Okay, uh, moving right along, rejected COPs, I don't have anything uh new to report on this section. Uh, requisitions, we're we are finalizing the uh May requisition. We've got roughly fourteen thousand left to. Finish the project. Uh, we are holding some uh retainage at this point amongst a handful of. Trade contractors, one of them being landscaping, so the retainage held right now totals about a hundred and twenty thousand. The uh CO, the um, excuse me, the day two list, uh, we've compiled some COPs that we've earmarked as day two work. Uh, I think all of us are familiar with these. We've we've discussed them several times. And I haven't added anything new to this list. The first one has to do with the isolators, which is probably the most uh pressing issue. This is the. RTU that sits over human services and we have compiled some preliminary costs. To uh install isolators that would also include a new uh curb to go with the unit. And that also includes uh some of the, what I call collateral damage as a result of doing this work. Meaning that we would affect uh some of the electrical, we would affect roofing. Um, as part of this estimate, we factored in some temporary cooling uh while we do the work. And we put a rough order of magnitude on it now of about a hundred and thirty thousand. And then, really, that's the only thing that's changed on this list. Um, the dry cam system we've talked about. I'm not sure if that's gonna go anywhere.
Frank, can you hold up one second? Uh, on on COP three forty-three, which you're discussing. For the benefit of the public, would you just go back and give a little history of why this is necessary at this point? Or or why it's being offered up as a resolution to an existing issue? Would you just do that so the public?
Yeah, so it's it's a resolution because we have to deal with the sound transmission from the unit. It's a rather. Large unit that spans the entire uh roof area between the gymnasium and the town hall. And to deal with the the sound and vibration that's uh coming from the unit. Um, the suggestion from the design team, who's also uh been in contact with an acoustician, is to install these isolators. It's essentially a new curb with spring isolators. Um, it will not make the sound go away completely. But it will certainly improve the uh sound level and vibration uh in the space below. Um, there's there's.
How much time is involved in this, would you estimate, to get, once, you know, we issue the work out? Do you have a sense of?
Yeah, from from start to finish, it's it's probably a a week's worth of time, I'm gonna say.
And how will it impact the community center?
Well, the community center would would probably have to uh, you know, leave the space, at least while a crane is set up to. Um, remove the unit and then place the unit back down and then there will be some work above the ceiling, so. Uh, a good chunk of that department would have to find uh other areas to work while while we complete this.
A good chunk of what department?
The um, the human services department.
Human services. That could be a challenge. Do we have to do any coo- cooling to the gym areas separate?
Yeah, as I mentioned, this estimate includes temporary cooling, so um because the unit feeds uh air to the gym. We would have temporary cooling units set up right inside the gymnasium.
Mr. Minor, you had a question on COP three four three?
Yeah, just uh additional question, just that Frank touched on it. What's the additional cost for the temporary cooling, number one?
Uh, a breakout value, Chris, is what you're asking?
Yeah, a a rough rough order of magnitude on the the one thirty.
Uh, it could be in the neighborhood of uh ten grand.
Okay, cuz I'm just wondering if, quite frankly, we couldn't live with it for a couple of days or a week. Because the old building had no AC in that part of the building anyways. It's just a uh tried an effort and compromised the, at least during that week to handle that. But the question I had for you originally is, it's my understanding that there was an acoustical engineer that came out. To look at alternatives. Is there no other alternative, Chris O'Neil, in terms of uh. Soundproof batting up in the ceiling or carpets or, and I know they were looking at any possible alternatives. Have we just determined that there really is no feasible alternatives?
I don't I don't think any of that came back positive, did it?
Yeah, so, Chris, the uh, the acquisition uh did have some other. Um, additional measures that can um be added. To help with the noise issues, but um I think the primary source of the noise is the structure born sound from the unit itself. Um, so I I. I think we probably could look at doing some other smaller impact uh. You know, mitigation, uh, and see where that leads us, but I think ultimately it's it's, we're gonna find that. Adding the the isolation dampers will will be the uh best solution in terms of getting rid of the structured born sound. But we can, we can look at the other ones.
This thing will resolve most of your problems from other things I've seen.
Yeah, well, that's my only concern is that we don't go ahead and change the design out, redo the curve. Install the isolators and still have issues with vibration. I don't, just because that's such a large unit on essentially a single story. I think is what's, in my opinion, and correct me if I'm wrong, Chris, in my opinion, is what's magnifying it. Is because it's got such a small cubic footprint below it. Am I right or wrong in that?
Well, in hindsight, you wouldn't have located that department under that unit or located that unit on top of that department, but.
Great, yeah.
It was all in the design and we are where we are, so we gotta go for the complete. Well, not the complete, but ninety percent, eighty percent fix on this, cuz nothing else that we've looked at is gonna touch that issue. So he didn't suffer with this constantly. The town relocates them somewhere else, which there's no option for that, not in that building. It's problematic and um, it is.
I'm just curious to if we've even even just as a test. To try to put some soundproofing up in the ceiling in those areas, because it's it's essentially the office space within those areas, am I correct? And that goes all the way back to IT?
Yeah, that's correct, Chris.
Yeah, I mean, does.
I don't, from what I've heard, I don't think that's gonna work. You'd be doing this eventually anyway. And patience has run short. This is the uh, so, well, Mr. Chairman indicated this to me when I had a discussion on day two items. He went to three forty-three immediately and said that he wants a price on that. Uh, in terms of getting the work done and um. You know, what the fail win factor is on this thing, and then I had a discussion with Mr. O'Neil and he represented to me at the time that. Wouldn't kill it all, but it would do a substantial job in reducing it. Um.
Right, cuz that's my that's my only concern, Joe, is that if we go ahead and do this system and we still have it. Versus not doing it, I just don't know we'll ever get rid of it.
Yeah, it's not where you want this to be, but it is where it is and the department is where it is. Um, that's it's an issue. And that'll have to go back and have the administration take all the benefit that we can provide them on information. And the fix and on doing analysis of however he determines he wants to do it to see if he wants to go forward. But he certainly wants to do something significant. And he wanted the dollar amount, so we've given him given him that and given him all the benefit of the input from the engineering side through Chris. And from the application side through Downs, so the committee has worked hard to try to get this. As you well know, resolved. Uh, I see two more people with hands up. James, who's first?
Your first one would be Mr. Woods and then Counselor Petracca.
Mr. Woods, please.
Thank you, Joe. Um, so I'm not really that familiar with what Chris is talking, Chris Chris Minor is talking about, Councilor Minor. But isn't it possible to do a combination of both? Do the isolators and take whatever precautions that Chris is talking about at the same time, or that's not? That doesn't make sense. Now, I I don't claim to know what I'm talking about.
There's just a multi-faceted approach to this. You either do the multi-faceted or you don't do it.
No, but I'm saying do do the isolators and the additional soundproofing that can be done. Is that something that can be considered or included in the proposal? Chris O'Neil?
Chris?
Uh, yeah, yeah, I think I think uh it's small enough uh from a cost perspective that it may even be something that the town might. Might do outside of the project just to kind of start looking at the um results of of. Doing those before they take the dive into spending the money on the isolators to see if it it dampens enough of the sound to make it palatable, I guess. Um, versus a hundred and thirty thousand dollar bill to go straight to isolators.
Well, I I'm not suggesting not do the isolators. I'm suggesting do the isolators, if that's the best proposal and.
Right.
The insulation. Do it at the same time or as one project. Just a thought. I don't know what the hell I'm talking about.
Makes sense. Okay, um, Gail, please.
Yeah, um, Chris O'Neil, I was just wondering, this type of problem, have you run into it before in any other um of your projects? And if so, have you found that it really does make a significant difference or not?
I personally have not encountered this situation on another project, um. But I can uh do some research on uh past projects in my office to see if they have used, you know, this size and if they. Did or did not use the isolators and and how it impacted the spaces below, so.
Take a um, a field trip there to see, you know, really how the end result is at some point.
Yeah, I'll take a little look into that for you.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, uh, ultimately, it's up to the town, but we wanna provide the best information we can while we still have a hold of the of the subject matter. But you're not gonna eliminate it all, no matter what you do. Now, does the percentage leftover still bother people? I don't know. That's that's the unanswered question. Even with what Mr. Woods is suggesting, which is a good idea, we don't know. That's that's the dark part of the road. As hard as that's to believe, that seems to be an issue. Okay, Andy, go ahead, Frank, please, with your list.
Hey, yeah, just to uh close the loop on the day two list, just a few uh more COPs here. Three fifty was adding privacy screens in the men's room. That was a concern raised at one point in time. Uh, twenty-two hundred is what we estimated. FRP in the janitor's closets or custodial closets, rather, another estimate of twenty-two hundred to add those panels. And then the uh cooling uh within the art room, this had come up at one point. Uh, sixteen thousand five hundred is what we had estimated there, so all in uh for all the day two items totals two hundred and ten thousand nine hundred.
Did you have any photos you wanted to share with us?
I do.
Okay. Counselor Petracca has her hand raised.
Okay, Gail.
Yeah, can I just um ask the art room cooling issues? Can you just like quickly refresh my memory on that?
Yeah, I think at one point we talked about uh separating the uh cooling for the art room. By creating its own uh temperature control zone and essentially that's what this is uh aimed to do.
But but what are the consequences of, I mean, is it like unbearable in there? Is it impacting, I mean, what generated this?
Uh, well, as far as I know, we have made uh adjustments to the existing system and I haven't heard any negative feedback and we've had some. Some pretty warm days so far, so whatever adjustments have been made to the existing system seem to be working. Um, again, I'm sure the town would have let us know right away if there was a an issue.
So this might be something that's not a real high priority, is that what yours?
At this point, that's that's uh, that's my impression, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, I have two more, who's first?
Counselor Minor is next.
Mr. Minor, please.
Just real quick to piggyback that, Gail, from what I understand, the commissioning agent, the one that would basically oversee. The the satisfaction of all the equipment installed, they did a second round of air balancing. Am I correct in that, Frank?
Yeah, we we did, yes.
Okay, so I I would almost be willing to bet that that probably was. They accomplished what they were looking for by the rebalancing, which is taking, you know. Removing some airflow from one area and redistribute it to another, so I would say that's probably not even a concern anymore.
Great, okay. Thank you, Chris.
Okay, uh, go ahead with your photos, please, Frank. Did I get everybody, James? I'm sorry.
You did, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Thank you. Go ahead, sir.
Yeah, I just, Joe, I just have some photos to share of our, our progress. This is uh mainly photos taken at the end of April following the final uh paving and then some of the, some of the site work that's happened around the uh, between the town hall and the PD. So the first photo is the fencing, the new fencing around the uh future um enclosure for the dumpster pad. And then the next photo, James?
It looks like a portable jail.
That's where we're gonna put the landscaper pretty soon.
Don't show it to the chief. He'll take that.
So uh, this one is the east side of the PD and then off in the distance, you can see the generator that is behind a fenced in uh enclosure.
Speaking of that.
And then this is just a, another shot taken a little bit further away so you can see the uh new um egress on the PD going out to the new parking lot. The new stair. Transitioning from PD to the town hall. And then a shot of the lower level uh parking lot looking up at the town hall on the west side.
That's very impressive, that difference in the elevation. If you haven't had a chance to visit, to go see it, because it really is. Makes it a true campus view. My opinion.
And this was another shot after we uh finished paving. We did produce as built. Um, it's like they were setting up do some final recording and uh can see the brackets up on the, on the building where the flagpoles are supposed to go. So you get a kind of, of a sense of uh what we're trying to accomplish.
Mr. Minor, do you have a question on the pictures?
Yeah, just a real quick one, Joe. Uh, Frank, do you know where the archive is for the video that was done on the initial phasing where we had time lapse? Do you know where that is?
A time lapse video?
Yeah. It was originally set up when, prior to the demolition of the old building and construction of the new. That was something that was done. Do you know?
I remember, I remember the uh, the former town manager had commissioned someone to do, to provide that service. It wasn't through, it wasn't through our contract, though.
Okay, so it was outside the contract?
Yes.
Jeff, do you happen to know where that may be?
No, I don't. I mean, that's a long time ago now. I, I, I'm sure it's somewhere, but I wouldn't know where.
Okay, is that something we could just look into for maybe the next time around?
Chris, I actually may have that. I, if I remember correctly, Tanya presented that at a council meeting and I think I have that on a flash drive.
Okay, thank you. That's it.
Okay. Uh, any other business pertinent to the committee? Move the public participation? Do we have anyone in the queue?
No one in our queue, Mr. Chairman.
Comments by committee members? Anyone wish you may comment, please do so now. Okay, well, as you know, we're getting near wrap up of over a five year effort here. In fact, much longer than that if you go by committee, earlier committees efforts to get where we are today. And I just want to again thank the committee for their due diligence over these many, many months. And I also want to make it clear to the public that their dollars have been spent very well, uh, given what we had to work with. It wasn't an easy task to uh move almost two dozen different departments into one building. It was no easy task to undertake these situations with a lot of other things going on in prior administration, believe me. I can tell you firsthand. It was no easy task to have limited swing space. Swing space is where you put your employees while you're knocking down the building that they'll occupy, new one on in the same area. You couldn't afford to do it, but through the uh advice of uh Tom Marbury and through the advice of Downs, we were able to supplement that in the design and have very limited swing space so that people could be, prior to COVID nineteen, still go to town hall, still go to the community center and access the benefit of all those services while we were building a brand new building. That was quite a hat trick. And I want to pass on to Downs for their credit on that and the committee and the design team. Wasn't easy through COVID nineteen to continue to build. And I have to say, the governor, this governor was very cooperative in allowing us to continue. He was shutting down a number of projects left and right but knew the importance of this to the town of Newington and he was a real gentleman about it. We had many conversations about that. And then the COVID nineteen plan that Downs put in place to monitor the trade and people on campus was also very effective and quite a bit of a hat trick to get done. But we were able to pursue it and do it. And prior to that, the lawsuit, and I'm not taking any position on the lawsuit. People have a right to bring a lawsuit. They feel they've been wrong. But we were concerned about the project being shut down and I remember Frank coming to me and saying, what are we gonna do with these long lead times? Like buying steel, should I go ahead and do it? And the committee had the fortitude and the courage to move forward and do it. No easy task, no easy task and we did it. And then there were surprise environmental conditions that cost us a ton of money, ate up our contingency. And the issue with MDC and going on their right away because the revised property line wasn't communicated properly to the committee. All of this was accomplished through the proper sequence, sequencing of the work performed by Downs. All of this was accomplished because of your efforts, the committee members are coming to every meeting in spite of everything else going around us. Easy to criticize, easy to say, eh, you don't know what the hell you're doing. It's a junk project. Easy to take those hits left and right. But you know what? At the end of the day, the public stayed true on this. They saw the enhancements and their dreams come true for two full courts and multiple other amenities and benefits to that brand new community center which took decades to accomplish that you all did accomplish. And so I want to thank you again for your efforts and you have a proud project here to talk to about to your friends and your grandchildren. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Minor still has his hand raised.
Yes, Mr. Minor.
I could take it offline with Frank, just a quick question. It's not a big deal.
Okay, thank you. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Thank you.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
See you soon.
Good night. You.
All right, thank you.
Take care.